City meeting. Tonight, we have a few things on the agenda, so it'll be a very interesting agenda tonight. And we'll start off tonight with a bunch of allegiance led by Councilor Hillier.
You'll put your hand on your heart, please, and say, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I think it slipped off here, is our COVID moment from those who have passed, and that's led by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, worldwide, we've lost 3,110,397 people to COVID worldwide, according to the World Health Organization. There's been 572,000 deaths in the United States, and we've had 2,497 here in Oregon, which Oregon has been doing really well, but that doesn't, there's still a lot of loss for all of us from this illness. So please join me. Also, I just want to say one thing, too. Even if you've been vaccinated, please wear a mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance as the variants are tricky. And if you've been exposed to COVID and have not been fully vaccinated, which means that you haven't received, if it's a two-shot, two shots and 14 days, you should quarantine for 14 days if you've been exposed. We're seeing an increase in cases and hospitalizations are getting tricky for a lot of areas in our state. So please join me in a moment of silence for those who we've lost and those suffering as a result of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. As I mentioned in work session a few minutes ago, Governor Brown called an emergency Zoom meeting of the state's mayors to have a discussion about COVID. We are seeing a fourth surge of COVID here in Oregon. They're anticipating that it will probably take two to three weeks to pass. And what's the criticality here is hospital capacity in the Portland metro area. As of yesterday, there were 291 people hospitalized. 66 of those are in ICU. 33 of those are on a vent. And there's a handful of folks going through ECMO treatments, which is basically they take all your blood out, oxygenate it, and put it back into you. Only Portland-area hospitals can do that, and that's why this is a statewide issue, because if you need that treatment, you have to come to Portland for it. Staffing levels at Portland-area hospitals are at critical mass. The staff is burnt out. And they're experiencing staffing shortages at all the hospitals in the Portland metro area. The governor will be making an announcement tomorrow in terms of what changes she may be making. 11 counties, I think she said, a bunch of counties are going to go to extreme rest tomorrow. And that's going to impact restaurants, could possibly impact gyms, can impact movie theaters. A question was asked about, aren't family gatherings the culprits versus restaurants? And OJ's response was, it's not the place that this is occurring. It's the fact that the activity, when you take your mask off in close proximity indoors for an hour and a half to two hours, that's how COVID is spreading. So I just want to let people know, most of the restaurant owners I talked to already are aware of tomorrow and a decision. We don't know, she would not elaborate on what they're doing. They were crunching the numbers over the weekend and today to decide on what they will do. I don't know if it's going to be closures, 25% capacity. Well, we'll find out, but it will be county by county, it sounds like, that those counties that are in extreme risk might have a change tomorrow as far as COVID restrictions. And as Councilor Brooks said, even if you're vaccinated, you still need to wear a mask. That's the biggest thing they're trying to get through to people is, one, get vaccinated. Two, continue to wear your mask. And then, as Councilor Brooks said, also continue to wash your hands and keep socially distant. P, I know people get tired of this, this is getting old, but this fourth surge is upon us, and she's hoping it passes quickly and she can relieve any restrictions she imposes tomorrow within that timeframe. All right. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news. Moving on to item number two is our, is our, item number one, I'm sorry. As in announcements, is a proclamation declaring the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week. A much happier subject. Stacy, you're on.
Sure. So each year, at the beginning of May, the city of Twalton honors our employees during what's known as National Public Employees Recognition Week to recognize the variety of work that our employees perform. Our approximately 195 employees truly are public servants who tirelessly serve our community. And in this past year, as we all know, the city of employees, our city of Twalton employees have stepped up in ways that have truly impacted the betterment of our community in probably the most challenging environment of our lifetime. And whether that was as a police officer, working in the library, our court systems, our public work staff who, you know, help to keep our streets and our environment safe and clean, or for those folks that are working kind of behind the scenes, either in finance, maintenance, IS, or any other internal service. And we know that our employees can be counted upon to show up and act with heart and in a professional manner, which has lasting positive impacts on our community. And for that, we choose to recognize our employees for their dedicated service. And so I will turn it over to you, Mayor, or I don't know which council member might be reading the proclamation, but I can turn it over.
And I'm turning it over to Council President Grimes. She's reading the proclamation.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to read this proclamation. And as Stacy mentioned, through the entire last year, in the most extreme and absolutely unprecedented circumstances, our city, our city employees, our management team, the volunteer teams that the city manages have absolutely stepped up to the plate and produced a better outcome, I think, than any of us ever could have imagined. Whether it was dealing with COVID and the changes we had to make to continue to give services, whether it was cleaning up after catastrophic ice storm, our city and the city employees have just absolutely been there for us and done a tremendous gold star job. And for the people that aren't maybe frontline, that are people in finance and all of the other business departments that keep the city's business community going, the way that we manage the money, money in the city budget, it's just absolutely an enormous source of pride for myself. And I'm sure I speak for the other councilors when I say how pleased and proud and thrilled we are with the people that work for the city of Twalton. So it gives me great pleasure to read a proclamation declaring the week of May 2nd to May 8th, 2021, as Public Service Recognition Week in honor of the public employees of the city of Twalton. Whereas, public service is an honorable calling that involves a wide variety of challenging and rewarding professions, including providing recreational services, maintaining public safety, improving transportation, protecting our environment, and performing administrative and management activities which are essential to efficient and effective operation of government. And whereas, Twalton city employees contribute significantly to the quality of life for the Twalton community with their commitment to excellence, high ethical standards, and diversity of skills. And whereas, excellence in the delivery of public service helps keep Twalton strong, prosperous, and a wonderful place in which to live, work, and play, and volunteer. And whereas, the commemoration provides an opportunity to express our appreciation for the many contributions public employees make to our daily lives. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Twalton City Council that the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, be Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Twalton, and the council encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of public employees, introduced and adopted this 26th day of April, 2021. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guests. One of the, you know, amongst other feedback that city councilors get, we always hear very, very positive things about our city employees. They're very well-respected. They go above and beyond. They respond to people on the street, to residents via email. I have the highest esteem for our folks. Everyone from finance folks to the police, to public works folks. Especially, you know, you showed what you had during the ice storm, how we rapidly responded and did the cleanup. You know, you couldn't ask for more from our city employees. And I just want to thank each and every one of you. I always look forward to the breakfast during the holiday time. I get to meet and greet each one of you and fill your plates full of bacon and eggs. Ideally, hopefully, we can do that in December, but we never know. I missed it last year, but I'm looking forward to doing it again, hopefully soon. Anyone else have any other comments about our terrific city employees? All right. So moving on to item number two is the State of the City announcement. Is that Megan? Or is it Sherilyn? Who is it? There she is.
I'm happy to give the announcement, but I'll defer to you, Mayor, if you'd prefer to do it.
You can go ahead.
All righty. So Wednesday, May 12th, is the State of the City address this year. We're going virtual, so we're asking everybody to join us at 6:00 PM, either via Facebook Live or on Cable Channel 28. There'll be a short video, approximately 20 minutes, which many of you participated in, followed by a live Q and A, where Mayor Bubinick will be taking questions from the audience. So while we won't be able to gather in person, we hope you'll see many familiar faces and familiar places.
Now, I'm looking forward to seeing the final edited product, because I think everyone did a terrific job on their tapings. And it should be fun to be able to do that. I have to, you know, I'm going out to Beaverton, do the Q and A, so we're, you know, it's high-quality videos. It's gonna be kind of weird to be in a TV studio during the State of the City versus doing it in person, but I look forward to it on May 12th from 6:00 to 7:00. And I really want to thank Megan for all the effort she's put into this and scrupled it and cornealed the cats to show up where they should be at the right time. You've done a terrific job.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, a statement condemning anti-Asian racism, and this is Councilor Sacco.
Thank you. The Twalton City Council is shocked and deeply saddened by the violent attacks in Atlanta last month, which took the lives of eight people, including six women of Asian descent. This and other recent incidents come in the context of a broader trend of anti-Asian racism, which has been increasing since the pandemic began. Racism and hatred have no place in Twalton. The Twalton City Council supports a diverse, inclusive, and equitable city. We believe it is our responsibility to provide unwavering support to all the people of Twalton. We strongly condemn anti-Asian racism and violence and stand with our Asian-American and Pacific Islander residents. We commit to actively seek to be informed, aware, and engaged with our community, read and affirmed this 26th day of April, 2021.
Thank you. As much as I'd like to think it doesn't happen in our city, it does happen. Where Councilor Sacco brought this up a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that at the Second COVID Shock Clinic here in Twalton, I was speaking with an Asian-American, and she was accosted in Fred Meyer, to my shock. And I couldn't believe it happened in this city, but it is happening. So, and it shouldn't be. It's ridiculous. The fear and the misinformation is just, it's nuts to me how, you know, race is, you know, being singled out. It's just not right. So please refrain from doing that, or better city than that. All right. So now we're up to, let's see, public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in this good old Zoom meeting who would like to address the council or who was at the poll center, this would be the appropriate time.
Mayor, we don't have anyone at the poll center, but we do have, looks like Veronica Williams has her hand up in the audience on Zoom.
All right. Ms. Williams, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate this quick opportunity. We began this city council meeting with a moment of silence and recognition of the many people in our community, our state, and around the world who have lost their lives to COVID. As you all know, on the 19th, beginning the 19th of April, vaccines were made available to everyone over age 16. And I am specifically requesting that the city council and the city manager join me, because I will also reach out to the county. I understand that they control where vaccine clinics, special vaccine clinics go in our community. I really think we need to be much more proactive. We still have seniors in our community who have not been vaccinated, perhaps because of fear, perhaps because of transportation challenges, perhaps because they don't have easy access to signing up. All of our students over 16 are now eligible. We should be taking advantage, as other counties are, of holding steam vaccine clinics at Twalton High School so that our students can easily be vaccinated without trying to sign up for appointments that don't conflict with their school days. We know that young people are more likely to have cases that have no symptoms and thus are more likely to transmit it to other members of their community. I also ask that we start using the wonderful mechanism of Nextdoor and other communication techniques to tell our residents where they can easily get vaccines, especially which pharmacies, such as Fred Meyers, Costco, et cetera, have them, and really be helpful in getting our community vaccinated. These are the people we go to the grocery store with, we go to the library, we go to the stores, we go to restaurants, we go to the park with. And we really need to get our community vaccinated. I think we would be shocked if we knew how many people have not been vaccinated and really don't know how to begin. Thank you.
Thanks, Veronica. One of the things I've mentioned during my summary of the call yesterday is the governor is, you know, committed to get more vaccines out. The mayor's all chimed in about frustration with vaccinations. And, you know, it comes down, you know, it comes down to supply shortages right now with J and J. But with J and J's shots being re-approved and coming back in the supply chain, there is a thought that we might move away from the mass shot clinics and move back to the traditional vaccine approach, that you go to your doctor or you go to your drugstore, especially with the J and J vaccine, that it doesn't have the refrigeration requirements. But I certainly will take your message to Chair Harrington. She has a standing meeting with all the mayors once or twice a month. And I'll bring up your request for the county to be, you know, maybe a little more active in setting up clinics like we had here in Twalton. And if not, you know, working actively to get those shots to, you know, the pharmacy and doctor's offices, that folks can get in there and get their shot. She is aware, I think, the stat yesterday was only, it was in a low 25%, 30% of folks who were totally vaccinated in Oregon. And the Oregonian had an article about the inequities of the shots being distributed. And that she discussed that yesterday also, and the state is making a plan to fix it. But your comments are well noted, Veronica. Anyone else? Any other hands up, Pates?
No other hands up, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So next up is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, those items that are considered routine, it will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of Resolution Number 5539-21, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the YMCA and appropriating special purpose revenues in the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Item number two is consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Three Mermaids Public House. And finally, item number three, consideration of approval for a change in liquor license application for Buffalo Wollwings. Would anyone like to have any items removed from consent and heard separately tonight? Councilor Hillier?
Yes, I would like to have item number three removed from the consent agenda item and discussed separately, please.
All right. So I have a motion for the two remaining items.
I move to approve the consent agenda with amendment.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to approve the revised consent agenda, that being items one and two. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, now my picture's just shifted. Councilor Brooks?
Aye.
Councilor Sacco?
Aye.
Councilor Hillier?
Aye.
Councilor Pratt? Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. All right. Moving on to special reports. Our first special report is from the Borland Free Clinic. And I believe Jordan, there's Jordan. Welcome, Jordan, representing the Borland Free Clinic.
Hi, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here to represent the Borland Free Clinic. My name is Jordan, and I'm the Director of Development Communications. And I'm actually joined by my boss, the Executive Director, Sandy Kosik, who is also on the call. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to share with you and update you on the work that we do. And I want to thank the mayor for the invitation. So I have a very short presentation, if I may share my screen, and be happy to answer any questions thereafter. So we are the Borland Free Clinic. I'm relatively new to Twalton, so maybe you all are aware of things that I don't want to take for granted. But we exist off of Borland Road, on the grounds of Rolling Hills Community Church. And I'll get into a little bit more about what we do and our history and some facts about our work. But you see here just our basic tagline, Hope Health Community. We are open every week, Mondays and Thursdays, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, and the first Tuesday of the month. And this is a new clinic day, which is made possible by the great internal medicine residents of the Providence Health System, which has been gracious enough to staff our clinic on those days so that we can serve the community an extra day a month. The most important word here is free. Everything that we offer our patients is free of charge. And I'll say a little more about why that is. Our mission is to bring hope and healing, as you can read here, to vulnerable people in our community as an expression of Christ's love. So by vulnerable, we serve people who are below 200% of the poverty line. That's how we define underserved community members. And as you can see, our work is, we are faith-based. Our clinic, we don't, we do not obviously discriminate based on religion, but we do see our services as an expression of a call to love our neighbor and to love one another and to make the world a better place. And just to cite one example of this, our medical director said recently that every time she comes to the medical clinic, right, to serve there, something amazing happens where she recognizes her work as a calling for her. And that's really what, you know, we're all about, is when you can do something that you love to do while also helping other people. You know, we think of that as a special place to be and a calling. And so that's why we are there. A little bit of history to our clinic, which is relatively short. And again, this predates me, but as I understand it, the idea for a clinic was really the result of an effort on behalf of conscientious parishioners and leaders of Rolling Hills to really support another clinic. Maybe you are familiar with Essential Health Clinic that pre-existed over a decade ago. And what happened was, the church did a one-time offering to help reopen a clinic in Tigerd, was successful in doing that, and really pursued a partnership with Essential Health Clinic. That didn't work out, and shortly thereafter, Essential Health Clinic closed their doors. And as a result of the experience in working with them, the same group of people were really passionate about offering a clinic on the grounds of Rolling Hills Community Church. And that took many years to plan and to prepare for. We became our, even though we operate out of the church in its basement, we are a separate organization. We do, we are a 501(c)(3). And our doors didn't open until 2017, when we started offering prediabetic education or the Diabetes Prevention Program, which we still offer today, and really just to help people in that situation live healthier lives. The next year, we started offering primary care services, thanks to our volunteer providers. And it wasn't until the following year that we hired Sandy, our first executive director, and many more accomplishments along the way. But to give you some idea, this past year, we established a formal partnership with Legacy Meridian Park to help pay for lab work for our patients. Why are we there? What are the needs that we serve? I mean, everyone knows the complex and expensive nature of the healthcare system, which we all navigate in our own way. And so we saw a need, and we are there to provide for those who fall through the quote-unquote "insurance gap," who do not have insurance or cannot afford quality healthcare as a result of their insurance. And we know that this need is out there. I have some old number, I have an old number here, according to the 2010 census. You all probably could offer me more updated statistics. But I am familiar with more recent studies, such as One Out of Clackamas County Health Systems Assessment in 2017, and a County Health Needs Assessment in 2019, which was a joint venture of the counties in the region. And it's very clear that people suffer from economic instability in our city and in our region, and as a result, and other things that result from that, like lack of housing, with lack of food, food insecurity, and then obviously, lack of healthcare despite exhibiting chronic illness. So we see ourselves as a safety net below the safety net. We know of government programs, even the Affordable Care Act, are there to help people and children. But we see ourselves as kind of those, to be there to catch those who fall through even those systems, who still can't afford healthcare. And we are the only one, we are on the border, obviously, of both counties, Clackamas and Washington. But we see ourselves as serving both, and we are the only free clinic that serves Washington County in that way, and one of only two that serves in Clackamas County, the other one being in Oregon City. So that's where we are. And how we meet this need is through three main objectives or certain programs of ours. As I mentioned, primary care and diabetes prevention. So, you know, we offer checkups for anything that someone might find themselves in a primary care facility to see their regular doctor and to help monitor patients who need more consistent monitoring for chronic health issues. The Diabetes Education Program, as I said, we still do. And that is run by certified diabetes coaches, who lead people in nutritional and other educational offerings so that they can live healthier lives. And then we offer a number of specialty services. It varies depending upon our access to specialists. But we have, for example, volunteer podiatrists and physical therapists who come through the clinic on occasion. And we also host periodically vision and dental clinics for our patients. In those cases, thanks to a partnership we have with Pacific University. We also do other things like write prescriptions. We also do other things like write prescriptions, you know, offer physicals, flu and other shots, including the vaccine coming up. And then, as I mentioned, the lab work in partnership with Legacy. We also, you know, offer patient navigator services, try to help people with organ health plan if necessary. Whatever we can, we can really do, transportation to, to, or referrals to Project Access Now for specialties, specialties care at a cheaper cost and so forth. So at this point, if Sandy, if you're there, we're going to have her kind of fill you in a little bit on some things we're looking forward to. She texted me a minute ago, not sure if her internet was working well, so I'm just going to wait and see if she chimes in here.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, great.
Okay, great, I'm here. We're just finishing up in the clinic, so apologize for the background noise. I'm going to see if perhaps I can get my video on, but if not, maybe I'll just talk to you here. So, yeah, Jordan has laid out basically what we've been doing in the past three years in clinic. We've got some great things that are happening as we move forward. There was, I heard the conversation a little while ago about, okay. There you go. Hi. About the vaccines, we're really excited that we're going to be receiving some doses of the J. And J. Vaccine from Clackamas County this coming week. We are going to be providing that in our clinics during our regular clinic time, specifically three to six P. M. On Mondays and Thursdays. We are offering those to our patients and those that are vulnerable in the community. We do have limited doses, so we're not broadcasting it widely. But certainly, in the conversation I heard earlier, if you have vulnerable folks out there and if you can get them to the clinic between three and six P. M. On Mondays and Thursdays starting next week, we will certainly provide them with the J. And J. Vaccine. And so we're excited about that. We hope we're going to be able to get more doses from Clackamas County down the road. So kind of keep us in mind if you have vulnerable people out there that you know that need the vaccine. As far as going forward, we're looking at hiring volunteer coordinator. Volunteers are the lifeblood of our clinic, so we can't operate without them. So we're looking to find a person that can help coordinate that program. We're looking to hire a community health worker. We're seeing an increase in our Latino population, and so we're really wanting to find somebody that can do some community outreach and help us serve that population better than, than we have been. We're also looking to expand services in the behavioral health area. That again is a service that we're seeing in increasing need. Jordan mentioned the transportation. We're looking at working with Rideshare and coordinating with the church upstairs as well to provide some transportation services from the Tiger Tuolton area to the Rolling Hills campus. So we also are looking forward to all of you coming to the, our annual gala, September eighteenth. We're going to host it for the first time at the Tuolton Country Club. So hopefully, a lot of you can participate in that. So I'll turn it back to Jordan.
And I'm just going to offer a few more things here, beginning with just some, just some numbers, so you can kind of see our impact. We had a slight hiccup last year when everybody sort of quarantined at the beginning of the pandemic, but things quickly got back to normal. We never closed our doors. We did transition to a lighter hourly, and we, you know, transitioned to some telehealth. But this gives you just some idea of the impact we made last year. You see some of our demographics here. Sandy mentioned our large Latino Hispanic population. And so we do offer translation services for Spanish specifically. But, you know, as you can see here, we served over three hundred unique patients last year. And just to note, we have over a thousand in our patient database, which is something we surpassed last year. That, those three hundred patients came in for almost seven hundred and fifty visits last year. And we have an internal way in which our providers establish a kind of dollar value to the services we provide, just for our reference. And that amassed over fifty thousand dollars last year in free medical care that we provided. And as Sandy mentioned, that was entirely due to our volunteers. There are just a few of us who are on staff, and all of us are part-time. And all of our providers, all of our front desk workers, our translators, everyone is our volunteers. And so they offer their time to do all this work. And the number I have here, over four thousand volunteer hours. If you just take the last twelve months, not the year 2020, that's over five thousand hours. And then if you, you know, multiply that by independent sectors volunteer service hour equivalent, that's quite a substantial contribution in kind to the work that we do. And so we are super grateful, this being Volunteer Appreciation Month for our, our great workers. So I just want to share a few testimonials, so you can just get a sense for the impact we're making. This is Valerie, who, I won't read through the whole quote, but just really credits the clinic for what she describes in her own words as potentially saving her life for being there when she needed it most. And there's more of the same, you know, Kay here writes, or we quote Kay here as saying, you know, just having someone there to invest in you, and this is something we take pride in. We don't over-schedule our clinic hours as short as they are, because we want to make sure we sit with the patients, that they're heard, that they're seen, that we know them, that we treat them as people, not just trying to cure their disease, whatever that may be. So that's super important to us, and we are grateful for the feedback we get, how much people appreciate it. So I mentioned our vision a minute ago. Here is our vision, that every person in the South Portland metropolitan area has the blessing of access to quality healthcare that is respectful and compassionate. We are not out to change the healthcare system. That's really not our burden. We don't feel like, that is a complicated mess that require a lot more people and expertise, and I'm sure they still would fail. Or we've seen that it's very difficult to make entries. Our mission is to be there for people who need us, and that is our goal and our privilege. And then finally, you know, we just want to make sure that you all are aware of us. Because we are a volunteer-based organization, because our clinic, again, is free. You know, our overhead isn't large, but we do exist due to our partners, our donors. But if nothing else, please just spread the word. We, we aren't that old, we haven't been around that long, and we still have work to do to make sure the community and the people who need us know that we are there for them. So that's it. If you have any questions, one of us can try to answer them. Otherwise, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thanks, Jordan, and thank you, Sandy. Reason I asked Jordan to come was Jordan's very active at the Tuolton Chamber. And he was in my small breakout room one time, and I was mentioning the services that I remembered, because I was there in 2017 for the ribbon cutting at Rolling Hills, along with Tuolton Chamber Board President and Susan Noack. And he told me, no, we're way beyond just blood pressure and diabetes treatment. So I thought it was very important that we hear what they're doing down on Borland Road, what an asset it is for the community, and just reinforces the need for us to continue to advocate for transportation down Borland Road, work with Washington County, Clackamas County, to get that shuttle either via TriMet or Ride Connection or Smart so that folks can easily get to the clinic and get the health, their health needs addressed. So with that, questions for Sandy or Jordan? Councilor Sacco?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I have lived in Tuolton for many years, and I actually have never heard of the clinic, so I was really excited that you're here today to share this information. I have a few questions, and I'll sort of rapid-fire them, but if you need me to repeat them, let me know. Will, does your, does the clinic assist undocumented individuals? And then I imagine people might be wondering what documentation they do need in order to get assistance. And then lastly, have, have you or are you considering partnering with the high schools where physicals, the cost of getting a physical for high school students might be a barrier for playing sports?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Thank you for the, for the question. The first part about documentation, we don't ask for any ID for any of our patients when they come in. Doesn't matter to us whether or not they're documented or not. They will get free medical care if they need it. As far as the high school, I reached out to the superintendent a couple of years ago, and I apologize, I can't remember her name. But we talked about providing some services specifically for sports physicals. And I know since then, they've got a school-based health center or made some adjustments. I'm not really sure in terms of school-based health center services at the high school in Tuolton. And we are certainly open to that. We have made the school aware that we are certainly able to provide that for, for people that aren't able to, to get into their own primary care provider or perhaps a school-based health center. We can certainly offer that at no cost.
Other questions? Council Reyes?
I don't have a question. I just want to congratulate Sandy for her, and Jordan. But I think I met Sandy a couple of years ago, and it's, I really, if you have not toured the clinic, go, go into it, and she will be, you'll be amazed at everything that is happening in this community. So thank you so much for this report. It's incredible. And let me know how I can help you. That's, that's all I can say. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria.
Other questions? Council Pratt?
Thank you for, you and all your volunteers for providing this great service for our community, for people that need it the most. I'm wondering, first of all, if, do you have, do you welcome people from anywhere in this area? I, you mentioned Tiger Tuolton, but I'm wondering if someone's in Wilsonville. Do you really care where that line is where someone lives?
No, no, absolutely not. Most of our patients do come from Washington County, because as Jordan mentioned, we're right on the line. As you probably know, there's the volunteer and medicine clinic that services a lot of the Oregon City area. But no, we've had patients come all the way from Portland. Yeah, as far as out in Hillsboro, Beaverton, so, yeah, we don't, we don't limit the patients who can come in to see us.
And then I'm wondering if, what your hope is for this clinic, like in the next five or ten years? And if you've considered, like, adding women's health care into that mix?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Our medical director is an OB-GYN, Dr. Bond, who practices up at OHSU. And she has all along wanted to offer more women's health. Currently, for those of you who have, have been in clinic, you know, we're basically in curtains. We have no walls or doors. So it's difficult to do some of those little bit more invasive type of procedures related to women's health. We are looking, however, we're applying for a grant to be able to get a couple of pieces of equipment that Dr. Bond really would like to do, like to have in order to perform certain female procedures. So the answer to that question is yes, we're definitely looking down the road to that. We are limited, as I mentioned, because of the, the way that we're set up. But that certainly is one of our long-term goals.
And I would just add beyond that, you know, the, the natural transition would be to expand our services and especially our clinic days. You know, ideally, we could be available on a Saturday at least once a month. But all that depends on our capacity and especially our volunteer army and their availability. And so that's our, our focus is.
Any other questions? Council Brooks?
Thank you for your work, and I appreciate it very much. And as a social worker, I kind of always go into mental health and especially with the kind of clients and the kind of needs and stressors and really trauma that a lot of folks, I'm sure that you guys see, experience. I'm just curious what kind of resources or what the goals are around. I guess I'd like to say behavioral health to include substance abuse as well as some mental health concerns that people are facing.
Yeah, that's a really good question. And that's, that's been a challenge of ours right from the beginning, is being able to provide those kind of services to our patients. Because as you indicated, with the population that we serve, that certainly those kind of things come to our doorstep. So up to this point, it's, we've been trying to refer out to outside agencies who may be willing to see our patients. As I mentioned earlier, that is one of our goals. Down the road is to provide some kind of more consistent service to those patients, whether or not it's bringing someone in or whether or not it's referring out to an agency that's willing to work with our patients. Obviously, our patients don't have resources. So finding someone that's willing to do that, either on a sliding fee scale or, you know, for free, it's, it's tough to do that. So certainly looking for all ideas. If any of you have something that you could share, please feel free to get ahold of me. But it is, it is an area that we do struggle with, providing that service to our patients, definitely.
Thank you.
Council Hillier?
Guess most of my questions have been answered, but Jordan and Sandy, it's just a pleasure to have you here and to hear the evolution. I happened to be in a seat in your building in 2011 and, and had the opportunity to help move that effort forward and know many of your incredible board of directors. And I know that your mission and vision and every word has been thought out. And I really just appreciate everything that you have brought forward to our community, but really just the spirit in which you've done it in. And I also want to say that for those of you that are choosing to watch the chamber event that the Borland Free Clinic has also been nominated, and I apologize, Jordan, I don't, I didn't memorize the category. But they are also being recognized in a variety of places in our community for their incredible work. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? Again, yes, thank you, Sandy and Jordan, for coming today and all your efforts and all the volunteers for having this wonderful asset in our community.
Thank you, thank you for asking us to be here, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you all for your work as well.
Thanks. All right. So moving on to special report number two is an update from the Regional Water Providers Consortium. And I think I've seen Nick and I saw Ms. Geeson. I remember Rebecca from a while ago when I was on the board.
Good evening.
Yeah, nice to see you all again, Mayor, councilors. I'll do a quick introduction and give it over to Rebecca, but we have Rebecca Geeson with us this evening. She is the Managing Director for the Regional Water Providers Consortium, and will be providing an update of what's been going on at the consortium over the last year and what's going on now. So take it away.
Great, thank you. Mayor Bubinex, nice to see you again, and Councilor Brooks and the rest of the council. Thanks for having me here to talk about an organization that you all have been members of for over twenty years. So I think this might be the first time, at least I've come to your city council meeting and talked about the program. So I'm excited to be here. So I'm going to try to share my screen. And you all let me know if you see it.
We got it.
Give me a thumbs up, okay, great. All right. Well, again, thank you for, I'm having me, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the consortium and some of our programs. All right. Well, again, thank you for, I'm having me, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the consortium and some of our programs to let you know what your, your city is involved with and how we're working together in the region around water supply issues. So a little bit about who we are. The consortium started in the late 90s. Before the consortium, most of the water providers in the region operated quite autonomously. And there was a recognition of a lot of emerging issues around water supply. And that involved acquiring water rights, new federal laws, the Clean Water Act, growth, increasing water demand. And folks came together and decided it was time to look at how the region was going to address future water supply needs for the next 50 years. And they started by putting together a regional water supply plan. And then the consortium was formed to help implement that plan. So we currently have 24 water providers, most of the water providers in Clackamas, Multnomah, and Washington County. And Newburgh joined us a couple of years ago to participate in some of our programs as well. So the consortium has a strategic plan that we recently updated and we have three focused areas. Meeting water needs, emergency planning, emergency preparedness and resiliency, and strengthening regional partnerships. Our overall mission is to provide leadership in the planning, management, stewardship, and resiliency of drinking water in the region. The structure of our organization is led by our consortium board of elected officials. Councilor Brooks is your representative to the board. We also have an executive committee that advises the board. The board primarily makes policy and budget decisions and the executive committee makes recommendations to the board. And then our technical committee is made up of kind of executive level folks. So Jeff Fox is the representative to the technical committee. And then we also have three working committees made up generally of provider staff. So some of the things that I think are really important about the consortium as far as benefits is that through all of our members, we speak with a unified voice on water issues. I think it's also very valuable that we have this very incredibly group, this incredible group of peers that share their knowledge with each other. We like to represent the collective interests of our members and your customers. And then by working together, we can pool our resources and reduce risk and achieve economies of scale around common goals. We're funded by membership dues, so all of our members pay into the consortium based on the number of customer accounts and your average water use. Our budget is generally around a million dollars a year. Hello. There we go. So our focus area, meeting water needs, highlights the need to use our regional water resources as efficiently as possible. In the regional water supply plan, water saved through conservation was considered a source of supply for the region. So we take conservation very seriously as a way to meet water needs. We implement a regional water conservation program and media campaign made up of TV, radio, web. You may have seen or heard some of our ads on TV or on the radio. We also provide resources to our members to help them educate their customers about the importance of water conservation. And for some, these programs that we implement help our members meet the state requirements for water management and conservation plans. The consortium also provides outreach in multiple languages. We recently updated our website to make it more accessible to diverse audiences. We also work with Portland State to prepare population estimates and forecasts for our members. This is really helpful because all of the providers get their population data using the same methodology around the region. We also are very interested in understanding how climate change impacts water supplies. And so we provide forums to discuss that amongst our members and try to keep on top of the research going on there. Our other focus area is emergency preparedness and resiliency. Our efforts in this area have really grown considerably over the years. And I think one of the great things about the consortium is that we're very uniquely positioned to bring water providers together to participate in trainings and exercises that help providers prepare for a variety of emergencies. And I'll talk about an exercise or a drill that we did a couple of years ago in a moment. We also develop resources and studies to help water providers, including a regional water interconnection study. So we have a geodatabase of all the water providers and how they're interconnected. And this is, can be really helpful for water provider planning efforts and then also to see how water can be moved around the region. And that has been a very helpful planning tool. We also developed a shared worker agreement through the Oregon Water Waste Water Agency Response Network. So if there's a catastrophic emergency and you have maybe someone who lives in Tuolton but works for, I don't know, the Portland Water Bureau, but they can't get to Portland, but they can come to Tuolton and they're, know how to drive a backhoe, then they can go to Tuolton and work. And that agreement is in place for those that have signed it. We also got a grant recently to prepare a regional emergency drinking water framework plan. Really excited about that. So this is a framework for the region about how to provide drinking water after an emergency. Jeff is serving on our project task force for that project, as is Nick. And I know Tuolton has some experience in putting together emergency water plans. So very looking forward to having their participation. A lot of our work also helps our water providers meet state and federal requirements to prepare with risk assessments and emergency response plans. Let's see, did I? Here we go. For the last 12, over the last 12 years, we've been able to help our members leverage over two and a half million dollars in Urban Area Security Initiative grants. And some of these were to plan to fund the interconnection study and then this water, drinking water, emergency drinking water plan. We've also been able to purchase equipment to help provide drinking water to the public during an emergency. So mobile water treatment systems and mobile water distribution systems. And then we've also expanded our very robust outreach campaign to include messaging about the importance of having an emergency supply of drinking water. And we've made that messaging available in multiple languages. We have a couple of videos. Actually, we have four videos, one about getting water out of your water heater, how to store and prepare water, how to treat water. So some really great resources. And in the next year, we're going to be translating, are reproducing those videos in about 10 different languages. So we can make that information to, available to as many folks as possible. All of the members of the consortium are members of Ormorn and have recently stepped up to help other water utilities in need, including during the recent wildfires and also the winter ice storm. During Salem's water quality event a couple of summers ago, several members sent down their emergency water distribution systems to help the community there and bring them safe drinking water. So it's a great example of how we're more successful and resilient by working together. So our last focus area is around regional partnerships. The consortium is built on partnerships and working together. And I think one of its strengths, as I mentioned, is speaking with one voice on issues of mutual interest and being informed to discuss and address issues and identify where we want to use our resources most efficiently. We also strive to be the trusted information, trusted source of information about drinking water. And I really invite you and encourage you to check out our website to look at all the resources we have about drinking water, not only conservation and emergency preparedness, but about where our drinking water comes from and why it's important and what our rates pay for. We're working on some updates to our website, which I'll talk about in a minute, that really reinforce that. We also have a drinking water advisory tool. Nick, do you have that on your website? I think you guys do. So this is a great tool because since many people don't know where their water comes from, you can enter your address and it will return with who your water provider is. And then if there's ever a drinking water advisory in the region, this kind of turns over to, there's a drinking water advisory, find out if you're impacted and you can enter your address and learn more about that. So next, I want to just talk a little bit about some of our past projects and then what we're currently working on. So as I mentioned, we did do a drill back in September of 2019. Gosh, that seems like 10 years ago. But we had a drill at Riverside Park on the Clackamas River and we invited all of our providers who had any kind of emergency equipment to come and train on that. Not only owners of the equipment, but other water providers as well. Because if they ever need to request it, we want to make sure that they know how to use it. So it's an opportunity to practice and train with each other, keep the equipment in working order, practice cooperation and collaboration, and then iron out any kind of issues and make improvements. It's also an opportunity for some staff to get continuing education units. So we always try to apply for those so they can maintain certifications. And then we always have after-action reports and identify gaps. And sometimes that leads to additional grant funding. So as a result of this drill, we got additional funding to buy some portable water tanks, hose ramps, and generators to support our equipment. We've done a lot of work on our website, mostly behind-the-scenes stuff to update the navigation and make it more accessible and user-friendly. We've also added some pages in Spanish. And it's, I did not know how much work it goes into making websites ADA compliant, but we've, we have done a great job with that. And I mentioned that we have some materials in other languages. We've greatly increased our Spanish language outreach. We have TV ads, interviews in Spanish. We have e-newsletters that we also do in Spanish. And as I mentioned, we're going to be working on translating some of our videos into more languages. And then we're going to be dipping our toe in Russian radio next year as well. In response to COVID-19 and the wildfires, the consortium quickly stepped in to develop messaging about COVID and drinking water. There was a lot of, I think, concerns about what this meant, what the pandemic meant, if it was going to impact drinking water. And then same with the wildfires and debris from wildfires. So we put some messaging on our website and provided that to our members so that everyone was sharing the same information. And we provided a messaging toolkit in multiple languages also to let, for providers to use to let the community know that their water was safe to drink and that providers were here to help, including with financial assistance. And then we have been transitioned to working from home and continuing our work from our son's bedroom who's off to college. So some of the things that we're working on now, we just collected all kinds of data from all our providers so we can share some information called Water by the Numbers. So one fun factor is almost 47,000 hydrants in our region that are maintained by all of our regional water providers. So we'll be doing some more messaging about that to just let the public know what goes into bringing safe drinking water from, from the source to the tap. And then we're also providing messaging toolkits for our members. So we just did one around Drinking Water Week. And I mentioned the Emergency Drinking Water Framework Plan that we're working on. We're a longtime sponsor of the Children's Clean Water Festival. And unfortunately, this year because of COVID, we couldn't have an in-person festival. But we did move it completely online. And there's just some great resources that can be used year-round for students and for teachers to learn about water resources and the water cycle and lots of fun activities. And then, of course, we're working on our summer outreach campaign and our fall emergency preparedness campaign. So here's our staff. You've met me. A lot of folks who work with the consortium are familiar with Patty Burke, who's our management analyst. And then Bonnie Cusman's our outreach coordinator and Riley Berger's our web mastermind. So we have a great staff. I've been with the consortium for over 20 years. There's a lot of longevity with our members and with our staff. And it's just a great organization, I think, for addressing the needs of the region around drinking water. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or I don't know if Nick or Jeff, you want to add anything?
No, nice job.
Absolutely. I think you're on mute. Were you going to say something, Councilor Brooks?
Yeah, I would like to, I just want to thank you for coming. And I was really pleased to be able to invite you to come after you talked about this presentation. And I will say it's one of the benefits of COVID that that was sent out and that we could have you come today and present to us. So there's so much and it's such a big mission that the consortium does. And it's such a regional conversation that we have. And I do want to say, when I first came on to council, we had just, you had just put forth the taking a picture with 14 gallons of water promotion. And I was too late to get in on it. And I've been kind of like wanting to show what a picture of 14 gallons of water is for, since I first came on. So I put it together for today as my visual gift. And, but I, I don't know if you guys can see.
Oh my gosh, that's awesome.
14 gallons of water. And that's, each one of those, you know, you see those things. It's actually 15 gallons. You see those boxes of water at the store. And there are two and a half gallons each. So that's what it looks like. There's an extra gallon for maybe your neighbor, your pet. But having 14 gallons ready to go in case of an emergency. And what does that look like? Because a lot of us just imagine 14 gallon or how many water bottles is that? So I just encourage people to think about it as these types of containers. And there's six of them. So just get six of them for each person and then you'll be ready. And then as far as my two takeaways from this year, one was being, having a front seat to the regional cooperation around the fires. It was really quite an incredible experience for understanding the collaboration of workers in our area. And a lot of it has to do with leadership like from Jeff Fox and Nick that we're so fortunate to have here to contribute. And then I guess my final thing was, you know, we see all the climate change concerns and how we're looking at resiliency together and how this organization has been thinking about this for a long time. So with, you know, in Washington County, we had burn warnings, no burn warnings in April, which to me was kind of early for talking about water issues this early in the season. I'm just curious your thoughts about what we, what we're looking at for water coming into the year? And how, and the, and then just, and just so everybody knows too, we have links to the consortium website, right on our website. And there's also really cool information about, you know, drought-resistant plants and different ways to take care of your own environment to be more conservation, you know, thinking forward. So anyway, I'll go back to my question. Thank you again for coming. I'm very excited to hear.
Oh, thank you. So as far as the outlook for summer and water supply, I think, you know, for the state, obviously, there's some counties that are in very serious drought situations already. The metro region tends to fare pretty well based on the sources that we have, but it really is very source-specific. You know, the bull run really relies on rainfall in May and June. So it's kind of hard to know how that system will be impacted. The Clackamas is snow melt and The Clackamas is snowmelt and run-of-river. So it really depends on the flows of the Clackamas. I'm not sure how things are adding up there. The Trawse Tuolatin generally tends to fare pretty well. And we have a lot of folks who have secondary sources as well. So we generally fare pretty well in the metro area, but not necessarily in the state. But we also have very great conservation programs and people do their part in the summer to shave that peak off as well. So we'll see how it plays out. I'm not sure. And take a picture of your, your water supply and maybe we'll use it during Preparedness Month. We love to have pictures and examples of people being prepared. So that would be great.
I sure will.
All right, great. Thank you again, everybody.
Any other questions for Rebecca, Nick, or Jeff? Well, thank you for coming, Rebecca. Yeah, this is the first time, I think, the consortium's come in years. So it's very informative. A lot of folks don't know about the consortium. So it's always good to hear from you and know that the region does work together to address water issues.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, happy to be here and let me know if you want me to come back?
All right.
All right, thanks.
All right, so Special Report Number Three is now from the Twalton Planning Commission. Their annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. This is Bill Beers, your Twalton Planning Commissioner. And Steve, you'll be paging through these slides for me?
It will be, thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Let's go on to the first one then. So this is your, this is pretty close to the current planning commission. That's me in the upper left-hand corner. And then working our way across, Vice Chair Mona St. Clair, Ursula Kuhn, Alan Appelmann. And on the bottom row, Janelle Thompson, Daniel Bach Huber, and Mitch Green, who recently left us. He tendered his resignation, so we have an open spot. So encourage folks to apply. I like having a full commission. All right, let's go to the next slide, please, Steve. So the planning commission's role, our first role is to fulfill Oregon statewide land use planning goal one, citizen involvement. So we're just one more way to pass citizen comments and perspective onto the city council. We also serve as an advisory capacity to the city council. Mayor Frank has been around long enough to remember when we were the Twalton Planning Advisory Committee, before we became a commission. So at that point, we were only in advisory capacity. But now we do things listed in the third bullet. Some quasi-judicial things like transitional use permits, sign variances, reinstatement of use, and some of the others that Steve has listed there. All right, next slide, please, Steve. So some of the recommendations we made to council were on topic, the, kind of the main topics for me were the Basalt Creek residential text changes. Like I think that's the, that's going to be with us for a while. So this really kind of kicked it off this year. And then an update to the cannabis code. All right, and then next slide, here, Steve. And we only had one conditional use permit this year. And this was, we approved Banfield Pet Hospital on a conditional use. And that's going to be there at the corner of Nyberg and Martinazzi, where the Thai food restaurant used to be. All right, next one. And then we also kind of get all of the inside scoop on all the things that are happening in Twalton and the broader area at large. Lots of focus on housing this year and that's going to, or last year and continuing into this year. You kind of see that popping up in those bullet points. It's kind of short and sweet, if that's what we did last year and kind of a, similar to what we'll be doing next year. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them.
Pictures are back. Questions for Bill? Councilor Brooks?
I don't know if I have a question, but I just want to thank you. I think land use issues are complicated and it takes a lot of energy and effort. And you're, like you said, your advisory committee is now full commission. So that's a lot of work and I appreciate the diligence that you and the commission do to prepare us to make the best decisions that we can make and inform us. And even things are complicated and even controversial. I've just noticed that you speak to those points of view very well and give us a very, give us a very balanced report of what you're thinking and your considerations. So I don't think it's an easy role and I really appreciate your service. Thank you.
I think we're seeing so, Councilor Brooks, I appreciate it.
Questions or comments? I want to thank you, Bill. You've been there a long time. And then some of the names there have been there a long time also. So I appreciate the years of service you've given to the commission and before that, when it was not a commission yet. And the folks that are on the commission gives the city great consistency that we have longtime commissioners who know the history of the city and know, have their feet, you know, firmly planted in the city. And so I appreciate your comments, your stances, and your feedback to us. And I look forward to another, are you going to stick around for another year or so?
Yes.
All right.
The next meeting we have, we're going to do our kind of internal elections for Chair and Vice Chair. So I'm happy to pass that torch on if someone else wants to.
All right. Yeah, and I usually get a lot of folks now that they know there's an MTC for Planning Commission that I know our Citizens Appointment Committee will be vetting those pretty soon. It's an exciting commission to be on and it makes some very important decisions. So I encourage folks to apply to be on the planning commission. All right. Well, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right.
Good night, folks.
Good night. So moving on to our next item, it's a public hearing, which is quasi-judicial. It's item number one, consideration of ordinance number 1456-21, annexing approximately 4.66 acres of property located 2,305, 23,500 Southwest Boones Ferry Road, tax ID 2S135D000303, annexing the territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services and withdrawing the territory to Washington County and Hand Sheriff Patrol District File Number ANN20-004. I've got a script that I need to read per the Oregon Legislature, and I'll start with that right now. The state legislature requires the following information to be read. The criteria for approval of a proposed annexation are contained in TDC 33.010 and include, A, the territory to be annexed is within the metro urban growth boundary; B, the owner of the territory to be annexed have petition to be annexed; C, the application is consistent with applicable provisions of ORS Chapter 222; D, the properties contiguous to the city are separated from it only by a public right-of-way or stream, ORS 222; E, the annexation is consistent with directly applicable criteria for boundary changes in Metro Code 3.09, including an urban service provider agreement or annexation plan adopted under ORS 195.065; an urban planning or other agreement other than those under ORS 195.065 between the affected entity and a necessary party; a comprehensive plan and public facility plan; a regional framework plan or functional plan; the annexation will promote or, the annexation will promote or not interfere with the timely, orderly, and economic provisions of public facilities and services; the applicable criteria for the annexation is consistent with the state and local law. Item number two, testimony and evidence presented must be directed toward the above criteria or those criteria in the Twalton Development Code or other laws which you believe apply to this decision. Item number three, prior to the conclusion of evidentiary portion of this hearing, any participant may request and opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The council must grant the request by either continuing the public hearing to a date certain or leaving the record open for additional seven days to allow additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony to be presented. Item five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties in opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Item six, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in circuit court. Item seven, the hearing will begin with city staff report, followed by a testimony from the applicant. The council will then hear testimony from any person in favor of the application, followed by any person opposing the application. The applicant will then be allowed to provide rebuttal testimony and argument. Once all testimony and argument has concluded, the council will close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and will deliberate towards a decision. And finally, item number eight, if any council members wish to announce any potential conflicts of interest, bias, ex parte contact, they should do so now. Councilor Pratt?
I have had communications with the jeans, but I don't think it will bias my direction.
I see Sean's face on wood.
I don't know if that's related, but I just.
Was the communication related to this applicant?
It was not at all related to this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I probably spoke out of turn here.
Anyone else? All right, we'll now begin with a presentation from city staff.
Good evening. I am Tabitha Beauchettier, Assistant Planner, the City of Twalton. I pull up a quick presentation here as part of our staff report to share with you this evening. One second here, my computer has frozen just a wee bit. Okay, I think we're back online. So as the mayor has described, we are here to discuss the annexation application for 23,500 Southwest Boones Ferry, also sometimes addressed as 23,550. And in general, when, of course, when we're talking about an annexation, we're really talking about a revision to city boundaries and districts. So these changes, as opposed, would apply to Walton standards and zoning for any future activities, whereas the property is currently within Washington County's jurisdiction. No development is being considered as part of this particular application, just that kind of boundary readjustment. So of course, where are we talking about? So we are talking about this property on Boones Ferry. If you're familiar with the Horizon Church Campus, very much tucked into there. On your screen, this teal line that surrounds the property is actually the existing city boundary. So this property is a single parcel that is actually surrounded by existing city currently on all sides, particularly as some of the properties to the south were recently annexed just this past year. The current property owner, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, has initiated this annexation request. As part of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan area, this property is already designated to be zoned as high-density residential upon annexation. So not necessarily as a separate consideration, just kind of a result of that previous planning effort. With an annexation, there would also be a few districts changed from county to city responsibility. And we're also looking at a simultaneous annexation into the Clean Water Services District, which helps facilitate sewer and stormwater issues as we look to those in the future. So just a quick look at that zoning map where you see that high-density residential in the orange. So without going back over all of the existing criteria, the full staff report is in the agenda packet for this evening's meeting. We're happy to talk about any of those criteria more in depth. But in general, the staff report does conclude that those criteria can be shown to be met. And as such, staff recommends approval of this case file and adoption of ordinance 1456-21. Though of course, this being a public hearing, we'll hear from many folks. And of course, we can talk about following that recommendation, possible path to denial, or possible path to continuing discussion of this case. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this particular juncture. But we could also continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Tabitha. At this point, I'll now invite the applicant and give them the opportunity to write any evidence or testimony in support of their application. Good evening, Ms. Duke.
Hi, I'm here with Gillian and Gillian's going to start us off with a PowerPoint.
Hi, I'm Gillian Saraj Felton. I'm the Director of Housing Development at Community Partners for Affordable Housing. And I have a little presentation to share with you. Give me a moment.
While Gillian's getting that up, I'm Rachel Duke. I'm the Executive Director at Community Partners for Affordable Housing. And we are really, really happy to be here tonight. So can I just jump right in there, Gillian?
Yes.
All right, well, good evening. We're, as I said, we're excited to be here tonight, give you, to talk about our application. We, we know that, we know we're here to talk about the annexation, but we're also going to just spend some time letting you know who we are and kind of what we're planning to do. So this is a visual of what we're planning to develop. It's called Palmbeck Gardens, named after longtime Twalton resident and former CIPA board member Doug Palmbeck. And we're really excited to share some of this information. So I guess next slide. Gillian?
So obviously, little Princess Bride reference never hurts. But this is, as Tabitha already went over, this is, we're here for the annexation process. It's part of, you know, the very first step in the land use process. We are, you know, very high-tech drawing skills here. We'll point to the property, where the property is. The medium and low-density residential that is around here, I know has, I believe both, I think there's two parcels and I think they've both already been annexed. And I believe Horizon School is already in the city boundary too. So we are the last parcel on this side of the road, to my knowledge, to be annexed in. And then just a little bit about CIPA as a organization. This is, will be our first affordable, regulated affordable housing development in the city of Twalton. So you may not be familiar with our work. So we just kind of wanted to talk about us for a few minutes by way of introduction. So we have been in operations for 27 years. We were founded by a group in a local church that noticed the need for affordable housing and came together to start providing a solution to the lack of affordable housing. And to date, we have 468 units of sustainable and service-enriched housing. Those are in 10 multifamily properties. And we have six single-family homes, including the two homes that are on the proposed, the site that's proposed to be annexed. We have 12, currently have 12 staff and hundreds of volunteers. And yeah, we've got a really, really great team that is pushing forward a lot of really great signs and services. And so Rachel Duke already introduced herself. I'm Gillian. Jeff Taylor's our Associate Housing Developer, who will also be working on this project with me. Our, we have, we're working with Carlton Heart Architects. We've worked with them on several properties and LMC Construction. And Wenaha Group is providing construction management. They are an indigenous-owned construction management company. So, oh, and LMC is actually located in the city of Twalton. So it's really great to be able to work with them kind of in their hometown. I think it's the first time they've had the opportunity to work with us in their hometown, so, pretty special. These are some of our recent buildings. Just thought you might be interested to see the work that we do. Red Rock Creek Commons is in this top corner, was just opened. It's 48 units and it's currently fully leased in the city of Tigard. Cedar Grove is 44 units and contains some two and three bedrooms. We're also housing formerly homeless families there in a partnership with Community Action, which has been going really well. And then this is. And then this is the Knoll, which is the senior property that we have also in Tigard. So just, just some highlights from our portfolio, can kind of see what our vibe is. And then I'll go ahead and ask Rachel to talk a little bit about the services up in the ride.
So I'm just to share, Cepha really does four things. One of them is we build affordable housing. And so Gillian just showed you some pictures of some of the communities that we have. We care a lot about what our housing looks like. We think our housing is beautiful. We've heard other people describe it as beautiful, so we don't think we're really off base. We also make sure that when we build that housing, it lasts into the future. So it's not just about getting the units on the ground, but we asset manage it. We know that each of those housing communities has, in some cases, needed up to 15 different funding sources to come together. Each of those funding sources has requirements and compliance and is a public investment. And we treat each of those assets like a jewel. We care a lot that they last a long time and that they're well used. The other thing that we do at those properties is support the residents who live there. We work really hard to make sure that our households are successful. Some of our buildings are senior housing and we have senior programming. Many of our buildings have families and we do a lot of work to make sure that kids have after school programming or they have summer camp. We've done some really creatively socially distant summer camp and, and programming for the kids for the last 12 months, kind of pivoting to make sure that we're still supporting families, right now especially. In fact, our staff have been hard at work making sure that our residents have access to rent assistance so that folks are, when the eviction moratorium is over, that our residents are solid and able to keep going and stay housed. Keeping our residents housed is paramount to us. And so that third thing that we do there is really around in, in supporting our residents. And then the fourth thing that we do is really engaging with the communities that we serve in Washington County and being part of the policy conversations and planning efforts. I was part of some of the 12 and 2040 conversations that were happening. We're engaged with Tigard and Beaverton. So we really care a lot about the communities that we're serving and we stay, we stay connected to the work that's being done. This particular building that we're talking about this evening, we have some real exciting partnerships planned, including Community Action, Centro Cultural, working to make sure that we are providing access to workforce services and asset building to our families who will be staying there. So that's just a quick description of the kind of work that we do. Gillian?
Yep, Rachel covers it all so well. One, I just wanted to bring in one other element of design that we have been incorporating is something known as trauma informed design. A lot of people come with needing services. And if you've been homeless or have experienced trauma in your life, you know, you were in that fight or flight mode all the time. And there are elements to design that can actually calm the mind down. And, and so we just wanted to put some, a few examples of the thought that we put in to every building and try and make the experience of the living better for our residents. So here's a little sneak peek of our proposed project. We currently own the, the site that was partially funded with $500,000 from the Washington County Housing, Housing Production Opportunity Fund. We are proposing quite a few large units, three and four bedroom units. All of the work that we've done in the area speaks to families really needing housing and large families needing housing, and there just being not a lot available. We are planning to zone for about 116 units of regulated affordable housing. And this will include the Metro Bond Funds and Home Funds, so, and Housing Opportunity Funds, which total about 16.2 million of public investment. And we're gonna pair that with 26.4 million in private investment from lenders and investors in the project. So that's a lot of committed funds to the project already, and we're excited to move forward. Little bit, I'm sure you all are aware of the area housing needs. A lot of this information is from the study that was done in Tuolton. But right now, about half of Tuolton renters pay more than 30% in housing costs, which would put them in what's called cost burden. It's considered if you pay more than 30% of your gross income for housing, that you are cost burdened. That is, that is, there are too many other things that one needs to do with their money to not make that a poverty situation. Workforce housing is really needed, there's a lot more jobs in Tuolton than housing. And so bringing additional affordable options helps lower commute times, increase stability, and just, you know, provide a place for folks that are working to work. And so a little bit about who is in our housing. It's all sorts of people. You, it's not, there we go. So at 60% of area median income is about 37,000 for a single person, about 53,000 for a household of four. And in the, in 2025, of the 10 fastest growing jobs were jobs that paid below 60% area median income. And they were all frontline workers, all five of those fastest growing jobs would be considered frontline workers. And so that's really who we're housing when we're talking about workforce housing. There are people that, that are working really hard and making a difference in our community and need a place that they can live without worrying how they're gonna make it paycheck to paycheck. Little bit more about what we're planning to do here. All of the units will be at 60% area median income and below, some will be at 50, some at 40, quite a few at 30%. Amenities, we have planned a community room that includes a classroom, an outdoor plate area, some community gardens, and then offices for those partners that Rachel was talking about to actually come onsite and provide services to the residents where they are, to really meet them where they're at. And we have spent the last year in the Permanent Support of Housing Institute and, and are looking to provide some units of permanent supportive housing here, leveraging the metro tax levy, there we go, not the bond, tax levy. So that's it. You know, we purchased the property last year, we're moving forward, we're currently in design development. We're targeting a construction start of next, end of second quarter of next year. That's what we're looking now, things come up, government shutdowns, so that could change, but that's what we're working with right now. So thank you very much for letting us introduce ourselves to you. We look forward to answering any questions. I know that this meeting is specifically about annexation, but as I said at the beginning, since this is really our first project, we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves and field any questions and kind of let you get to know us. Because I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of us as we continue the land use process.
All right, thank you. So now we'll hear from those folks in the Zoom meeting who want to testify in support of the application. If anyone at the poll center or in the meeting would like to voice support of the application.
Mayor, I have no one at the poll center, and if anyone does have, they can simply raise their hand, turn on the cameras, or put their hand up as the reaction. And we can call on you, but I have no comments from anyone on the side of the floor.
Right, now I'll switch gears and say, now we'll hear from those opposed the application. Mr. Lucini?
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to, to make a few comments. My name is John Lucini, my wife Grace and I live at 23677 Southwest Boones Ferry Road in unincorporated Washington County. We appreciate the opportunity to make some comments regarding the proposed annexation 20-004, the Cepha project and property. Our property is located within 1,000 feet of their location and is west and slightly south of the area of the proposed annexation. We have also submitted detailed written comments to the council earlier today. We understand this hearing is for an annexation request and is not a property development hearing. And please understand that we're not opposed to the annexation per se, nor are we opposed to Cepha's project on the property. However, it is our belief that the city has not sufficiently complied with land use laws and good urban planning principles with regard to the annexation. As described in our written comments, we have the following concerns. The City of Tuolton lacks adoption of two documents required by the state, which are needed in the evaluation of land use planning actions and are relevant to this proposed annexation. First off, the city lacks an adopted stormwater management plan for the Basalt Creek area, as is required by the state for public facilities planning. Since the city lacks a stormwater management plan for the area and the existing system has previously failed, the sequencing of when Cepha will be able to access connections to an existing or new offsite conveyance or treatment system facility for their stormwater has not been established. The City of Tuolton adopted natural resource maps that lack inclusion of any data developed with a clear and objective standards, conditions, and procedures in the GOAL V, natural resources inventory for the Basalt Creek area. As a result, it is unclear how the city is able to assess and minimize the potential impacts of stormwater following, flowing from the upstream location of the Cepha annexation will have, what kind of effect it will have on downstream natural resource, resources requiring protection. Our second concern is more of a procedural issue. The annexation application included a certification of sign posting, which is required by the Tuolton code. I noticed in the Cepha presentation, they did show a picture of the Boones Ferry Road site with a sign on it. Whether they're disappeared or someone took them down or whatever, we checked the last three or four, over the last week approximately, and didn't see any signs of that type in front of the, in front of the property. And our concern there is that the citizen involvement opportunities for the residents in the Basalt Creek area have been problematic. And if, in fact, there were no signs, it makes it difficult for the, the citizens of the area to know that there is a potential annexation. They might not be aware of how to obtain information of the action or when the only hearing on this action might take place. As a result, they wouldn't have the opportunity to make comments on the proposed annexation. Because of these issues, we're requesting the city council continue this hearing to a date certain in the future when the city has complied with the development and adoption of a stormwater management plan for the Basalt Creek area, which will address the many stormwater management issues which present themselves. We would like to make it clear again that our issues here are with the city and not with Cepha. However, the city and/or Cepha should address the need for identification of how Cepha will provide safety and efficient stormwater management for their Boones Ferry Road property as part of an annexation process that complies with federal, state, and regional mandates. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Here is Lucini. Are there any other folks who'd like to voice opposition to the application? Seen anybody Bates in the, I don't even see one screen, so.
I do not see anyone, man.
All right. So this is the opportunity for Cepha and/or city staff to rebut the opinion of Ms. Lucini. So Tabitha and/or Rachel or Gillian?
I wanted to know, I didn't want to step on Tabitha at all. So we are currently in concept design phase. We have not gotten to the point where we are engineering our stormwater plan. We've not gotten to the point where, and, and that usually comes as part of the land use process. The annexation actually helps with that because we can, once we're in the city, we're gonna be able to work with city planners and city staff and CWS. We're actually not, not able to, to really get to the meat of what we need to do. So, so the annexation is kind of the first step, and then the stormwater will really be part of our land use application. And as I had stated in my, in my email to Ms. Lucini, that we are actually held to a higher standard because we have federal funds in this project. We're held to a higher standard of stormwater quality. And CWS already is going to require that we reduce the stormwater flow. Exactly how we come to that is an engineering question that, unfortunately, I'm a Jill of all trades and expert in none, that's kind of the role of developer. So I can't tell you exactly how that will be engineered, but we would be happy, once it is completed, to bring it back and have our engineers, which is Vega, walk anyone through that, that wanted to know how we were managing that stormwater flow. So right now, this is part, step one in a very multi-step process. And we would be glad to come back and keep you updated. But step one is definitely being annexed into the city so that we can more efficiently work with city staff as well as Clean Water Services to make sure we're on the right track. And what we're designing is acceptable, both on an engineering basis and on a code basis to both of those entities.
I would also just add that if you look at the picture at the beginning of that PowerPoint or what Tabitha also showed, is this is, this is a, like a missing puzzle piece out of the puzzle. The area around is, is all annexed in, and so we're just asking to be treated the same way that our neighbors have been.
Do you have anything to add, Tabitha or Steve?
I think just to add, just to add, I think that both the council and staff certainly shares several of the concerns that the Lucinis have and look forward to resolving them in the future. I think that we believe that overall, the findings and then the evidence and the records specific to the criteria for annexation at this hearing support approval of the application. But of course, we defer to, to council to make the ultimate decision.
All right. All right, at this point now, I'll open the floor for questions of the applicant, staff, or folks who are in opposition or in favor of the application of council. No questions? Council President Graham?
Thank you, yeah, I have a question to go back to the Chiefs' concern. I guess Sean or Sharon, this might be a question for you guys. Are we missing a piece of the stormwater master plan that impedes us from annexing this piece of property? Or is that just a shade of that argument? Or an opinion that something is needing to be clarified that hasn't been clarified? Because I think that was the basis of Mr. Lucini's comment, or one of them at least.
I will defer to planning in terms, Sean, in terms of the legal analysis of that. But my understanding is that we are working on a stormwater master plan associated with Basalt Creek, but that is not one of the criteria associated with the annexation.
And the staff report in detail does ask about the timeliness of an annexation, particularly with regard to the future ability to provide for infrastructure. So in this particular case, as you'll see in those findings, you know, we look at some of the ways in which Cepha in particular is continuing to work with the city, work with Clean Water Services, and work with those neighboring property owners who have also recently annexed into the city. And we certainly respect that there can be stronger approaches to our long range planning in the future and certainly ways that we as a city can, can look to greater heights in our long range planning efforts. But the scope for annexation is a bit more narrow, to my understanding.
Council Pratt and Council Bruce.
I'm gonna get in the weeds a little here, because I heard the, the Lucinis mentioned concerns that no signage was posted. I swear I remember a sign about a week ago when I went by there about, and I know it said annexation. and I know it said annexation on it, but I just want to confirm if the signage was posted and if you, I mean, if it had been removed, if you were not aware of that.
We, the side, and Jillian had a picture of it in her presentation, and we did not know that it was missing. If it was missing.
I can add.
Oh.
I was just going to say, Nora, that brought this up to something previously, so we didn't have an opportunity to hear that.
Yeah, our, our code gives applicants 48 hours to put the sign back up after we find out and after we tell them. So unfortunately, yeah, not finding out till this afternoon, so definitely in the future.
Council Brooks?
I, I could say I posted the sign myself, so I know that it was. It absolutely was posted at some point. It might have been blown down by the winds recently, but I assure you that it was there.
My, actually, my comment was, my question was similar. So I too have seen the sign posted, so I don't know how recently it's been gone, but it was definitely, I've seen it, I, I saw it less than a week ago. Anyway, but yeah, it is really good if someone sees something missing to let us know right away, and then we can cure it, like they said, which that's a new term for me. That was my question. Thanks.
Any other questions from city council? All right, seeing none, I'll now close the hearing and council can begin deliberations.
If there's no deliberations, I'm happy to make a motion for a first reading by title only.
Second?
I have a motion as second for a reading by title, first reading by title only. Resolution, where my ordinance number 1456-21. A discussion on the motions. Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also.
Ordinance number 1456-21, an ordinance annexing territory at 23500 Southwest Boons Ferry Road, tax map, 2S135D, lot 303, into the city of Twalton, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hampshire Patrol District and annexing the territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services. Annexation number ANN20-0004.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only.
Second?
I have a motion as second for a second reading by title only of ordinance number 1456-21. A discussion on the motions. Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council, uh, Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Ordinance number 1456-21, an ordinance annexing territory at 23500 Southwest Boons Ferry Road, tax map, 2S135D, lot 303, into the city of Twalton, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hampshire Patrol District and annexing the territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services. Annexation number ANN20-0004.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1456-21.
Second?
I have a motion as second to adopt ordinance 1456-21. Any discussion on those motions? Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It's unanimous. All right, the ordinance is passed. Right. Next up, we now move into general business. Item number one is consideration of resolution number 5538-21, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Tiger Twalton School District, number 23J, related to the school resource officer program. We have any presentation or anything, Sherlin, or no? No, there's Chief Steele. He was unmuted.
Yes, I couldn't let you off that easy. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and it was Council Bill Steele, your chief of police. We're going to talk a little bit about our school resource officer program, and I'm going to share my screen, and since you get to hear from me every now and then, I invited a special guest. Sergeant Jeremy Rankin is with us tonight, and he's going to actually walk us through the slides. If you don't know Sergeant Rankin, he's our sergeant assigned to our detectives and supervises the school resource officer program as well. So he's been with the city for a number of years, and I'm going to turn it over to him. And let him.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Happy to be with you tonight. Yeah, we, this is a slide show that the chief and I had to present regarding the SRO program with the Twalton Police Department. This slide here is a brief history of it, of the SRO program. We've had a partnership with the Tiger Twalton School District since 1987, when our police department was formed. Over the years, the, the program has grown from one officer to three officers, which is what we had prior to the, prior to the COVID pandemic last March, when the schools were closed. The last full year, we had two SROs assigned to Twalton High School, one SRO was assigned to Hazel Brook Middle School. They also share responsibilities for the three elementary schools in Twalton, as well as Mitch Charter School and then Horizon High and Middle School and Elementary School. All of our staff are certified great curriculum instructors. The great acronym for the Gang Resistance Education and Training Program. And we've involved that program since 1994. Roles have definitely evolved. I've been supervising our SRO program for the last few years. It's involved in that time and over the 30 years to include new responsibilities and training. And in the fall of 2020, the city of Twalton partnered with Tiger Twalton School District, as well as the Tiger Police Department for a community review of the SRO program. The summary of the community process. The, as I said previously, the Tiger, city of Tiger Police Department, city of Twalton Police Department had caught and had the school district contracted facilitators who were tasked to conduct several listening groups and interviews throughout the fall. Throughout those interviews, students, staff, administrators, members of the police department, parents, and community members learned more about the school resource officer program in the schools. Community surveys that were conducted by the school district indicated overwhelming, but not 100% support for the program. The facilitators encapsulated participants' experiences, perspectives, concerns, and hopes for the future of the SRO program. After the completion, there were six key themes that emerged. I'm going to go on to those on the next slide. The six key themes that emerged from the facilitative report were the perception of safety around the schools, student and staff interactions with the SRO. There was a definite lack of clarity around SRO roles and responsibilities that was voiced by the community, staff, and students. There was a feedback and a need for continuous improvement was identified, structural issues with the program, and then ongoing socio-political issues with the SRO. So two officers, it's actually Brian Miller and Kevin Miller, are scheduled to return to Twalton High School starting next Monday, from today, May 3, 2021. SROs will be primarily responsible for responding to calls. If there are some in the city, they also respond during the day, you know, priority calls near the schools. They will present to classes and address all of their issues and handle all calls for the schools in the city of Twalton. This proposed contract is the remainder of this 2020-2021 school year and the entirety of next school year 2021-2022. And there's going to be an SRO task force that is established to ensure that new responsibilities of the district and SROs are being met. So some of the essential roles of the SROs and responsibilities, and this is some of the things that came out of our focus group of community events, was that they are present at the school to ensure safety of the students and the staff. They respond to emergency calls that are within the proximity of the school. Investigate all child abuse referrals that involve students at various schools within the district or the city. They're to attend school-related staff meetings and integrate with the school staff. Attend bi-monthly meetings with student affinity and alliance groups. Participate with the school district's diversity, equity, inclusion training, and investigate any criminal allegations that have an access to the school. Any, any questions about that for either myself or the chief?
Council Pratt?
I see this goes through the 2022 school year. Will there be a review process at that point, if this will continue or not?
Yeah, I'll kind of weigh in on that one. So through the, the process, it brought to light some areas that we can improve the program. I think the program for at least the Twalton side has been very solid for a number of years, but it gives us an opportunity to look at things a little bit differently. And some of that, that feedback came from the process. So that's definitely on the radar, probably not right at the beginning of the school year next year, but definitely no later than midway through the school year. I see us getting back together, a group, and presenting information. If this council would like, we'd be happy to do that, but making sure we include the, the school board as well. Just some of the, the things that have been addressed and additional ways we've, we've changed the way we do business and any other ways that we might change moving ahead. So that's definitely on our radar for the first part of next year.
And that my other question is just kind of more curiosity, but I know there was discussion about the police wearing full uniforms. All their equipment, will they still be going in with all their equipment?
Yeah, so the uniforms, right, at this point, aren't going to change. We're going to do a little bit better job of educating not only the, the students, but the staff at the schools about why we wear certain things on a uniform and, and why it's important. So that won't initially change for this year or going into next year, but as we continue to meet with the different groups, if that becomes a, an issue we need to address, we'll definitely look at that for sure.
Thank you.
President Grimes?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I got the impression from the PowerPoint slide that we had more than two officers assigned in the SRO role previously, and now we're just going to have two at the high school. Am I misinterpreting that, or are we cutting back?
Nope, you are spot on. So in the past, we did have three officers assigned into the schools. The financial terms have not changed for the new contract as opposed to the last contract. The school district reimburses us for half of one position, basically. Made the decision for this year at least, since a number of students aren't attending the schools, we're, we're going to start, we're going to finish this school year with, with two officers assigned at the schools. We've got some other things coming our way that we're going to have to manage our resources appropriately. We've hopefully got a partnership coming with the mental health response team that's going to, you know, take some resources. So we're just continually reassessing how we deploy our personnel into those roles. So that's what we're going to finish the school year off with this year, and then as we move into next year, we'll, we'll kind of reassess that and see if that need is there, or if we've got something else that's a higher priority.
Okay, so when you, so even though this encompasses the 2021-2022 school year, in the fall, we could maybe have a discussion about resource allocation as a council and as a police department about getting resources back in the school?
Yeah, so the way the contract is written is it will, will provide, the city will provide two officers at a minimum, and that's the same language it's been for, for years in the past. So yes, that's something we could have another discussion as we move forward in the next school year.
It just seems, I mean, I know there's just need everywhere these days, but, you know, the SROs, you know, a lot of the testimony that really hit me hard when we were doing the community listening groups is so much good that they've done in the school for so many kids. And there was a lot of, you know, first-person testimony about impact that SRO officers had on kids. And it's hate to see us, you know, go down, make such a big change.
You know, I'm, I'm not going to disagree with you whatsoever, and I think that's one of the reasons we really stood firm with our commitment to the program, because we think for, as Sergeant Rankin pointed out, for the last 30, 34 years, they've done a lot of great things, so it's important for us to continue to, to fill that role in our, our schools. And if there's things that we need to adjust different and do differently, we're, we're open to that. And again, I got to give them credit to Sergeant Rankin and Officer Brian Miller especially, because they're the ones that were really, you know, knee-deep in the community process and were as open as could be during all of those conversations about, if there's something we need to be doing differently on our end, we're definitely open to, you know, listening to those concerns and, and working our way through whatever might be out there.
Other questions for Chief Steele or Sergeant Rankin? All right. Council discussion. One thing I want to do add is that I want to thank the Tucker Twalton School District Chair, Jersemead, and Ben Bowman, vice chair, for changing two things, two words in the contract. They listened to what I had to say and the feedback they had. They really took it back to the board. They made the changes in the contract. And Ben Bowman texted me during the meeting right now, said the TTSD has unanimously approved the contract on their side, and they appreciate the changes that we requested.
I just want to, I want to thank everybody that's involved in the program, and, and I also want to appreciate the changes too, because, you know, I did also hear, and I heard from other listening sessions, not just here in Twalton, but around town. And I do think that, you know, especially with, especially with racial tensions in our community, there's some people that respond differently than others to police presence. And being mindful and understanding that, that some kids, some kids' experiences are going to be different than other kids' experiences, I think is really important when we're thinking about things. And, and I thought those conversations with the other council from Tiger and the school board were informative to me. There's just, you know, those couple of things that come to mind are, are those, those issues as well as just some different outcomes that our two schools experienced under the same program as far as, as far as convictions or exposure to the actual legal system. So those, those were some things, and I think that it's really important that the conversations happen because I didn't really understand that much about the SRO program. When I was growing up, we did not have police officers in my school. Kids being used to having police officers in the school is an interesting concept to me. And I do appreciate the thoughtfulness around the social worker and looking at especially addiction issues through the lens of medical model and better understanding around that. And then I'm also curious around, especially with the great program, how much gang involvement, and we have gangs here in Twalton, and I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, I can answer that. A lot of the training has to do with introduction. Uh, they they do talk specifically and then the great training about the, you know, in- information about gangs and, uh, you know, how one is introduced to it and kind of the, uh, kind of the introduction to gangs, but a lot of it is familiarity with the SRO program and, um, you know, it's it's not all classroom. There's a lot of interactions that are fun. They they do various activities during that week. Um, so it's not just all talking about gang activity and and it's it's a lot about about peer groups and just positive interactions with your peers and how to assimilate into middle school. Uh, so first they do for sixth grade and then up on through eighth. So it's it's not all, I guess, a week of introduction or talking about gangs. It's a lot of it's a positive peer, peer, peer interaction and interaction with the police. So, um, and then as far as gangs in Twolton, I I think they're, you know, I mean, we we've had, uh, gang incidents. I wouldn't say there's a gang issue in Twolton by any stretch of imagination, but, uh, I mean, it we're in the large metro area, you're going to be, there's going to be gang activity around, but not anywhere near, uh, what I would call a problem or anything like that.
Thanks for letting me know. I did work in community corrections for a while and worked with gang members, but I'd never heard of any here. So I was, I'm grateful to know that. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Chief or Sergeant Rankin? So do I have a motion?
I have my own, yes.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel Reyes.
Oh, I also want to congratulate the team and the SROs. I did grow up in elementary middle school or junior high when I was going to school in high school, when they're, you know, with SROs or police officers. So I am very familiar with it. Um, even in the eighties, um, when we were talking about just saying, oh, it was always a program done by the um, LAPD at the time. So, um, I'm, I have to say that it's it's really tough. I I I think Twolton is doing great, and I really encourage, um, that connection with with the SROs and in the community because, um, I did see violence inside my school, shootings and everything, and it was tough. It was, and, uh, having someone or at least knowing that there was presence in my, in my school, someone with some kind of, you know, support, uh, that was very, very helpful for those of us who were part of the neighborhood, but we weren't part of the gang. And I mean, I'm talking about gangs inside the school. Everyone was separated in groups. And there were times that they would just start fighting, and there was this huge fight in the middle of the cafeteria. So I did grow up like that. I saw that all my life. Um, so I do have a lot of respect for the SROs. Um, when I did give a speech at the Twolton, um, and I believe it was an SRO or someone who works with the program. Uh, and I talked a little bit about my experience in in high school. Um, and having been gunshot by a gang member, rival gang member at seventeen, I was in the eleventh grade. So I remember the kid went to my school. So I know all that. And, um, one of the things that I I kind of felt that there's, there's maybe some kind of, uh, I don't know, it's just, just, just an idea because I was a seventeen-year-old in a really bad school. So, um, it's that connection or volunteer opportunities to see what's beyond your school. And I think that, um, like, um, together, go and feed the homeless or together, like that activity that that is, we're common, we're just, we're, we're, we're humans. And I think that was one of the things that I noticed that people want to do. And I I remember that helped a lot a bit with me growing up because I remember that, um, Officer Beecham, and I remember his name. He coordinated the the kids, the the rough kids from my neighborhood, um, from our, um, district to go and and, uh, go to a shelter and we fed, uh, people. And we, and I felt so, and I'm telling you, I live in the ghetto, but I felt privileged because the way these people were living was way worse than when I, than I was living. So I felt like, wow, I I value that moment, that time, and and the fact that the officer was connecting with us, serving as well, that that brought in a lot of I still remember it. And so, and I'm forty-something years old, and I I feel like that's, that was very helpful. And I think if we do more activities, we have nonprofits in the community here in Twolton that we can, we can work with and and kind of connect those young people that are in that stage of learning or wanting what to do. And it's not always academics because we all know that not everybody was made for school. Some of us are made with hands-on kind of work and exposing them to that kind of, those kinds of activities, activities and maybe connected with the SROs and the community leaders would be a great partnership to to help these, and with these kids that think of, you know, when I was in high school, I never thought I was going to finish high school. But then I graduated and I was like, what do I do now? You know, it's like, my, you know, so it was, it's just an eye-opener. And I'm just saying that it's just ideas out there that we can commit to the youth and, uh, the SROs. And I I really fully support your work. But I think that working with nonprofits, open up offices would help a little bit more to connecting them, bringing them in the community, in the schools or, I don't know. And I don't know who can start that. Maybe you guys can. But I, I'm just saying that, um, it helps a lot when you're in that age.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Hillier.
Yeah, I'd like to just, um, say thank you to everyone who's made comment. And from some personal experience through my work life with the Twolton Police Department and the school resource officers with Twolton Together, who is a local nonprofit like, uh, Counsel Reyes was referring to. You know, we have had the opportunity to interact on on so many different levels with so many different youth. And, um, the SROs have attended national conferences with the Community Anti-Drug, um, Coalitions of America and helped our youth sitting at tables and mapping out our community and helping talk about logic models and doing the things that are happening. So I just really want to share some things that there are some really great things happening in our community. There are, um, I mean, there are just so many different things, and, um, I just wanted to ensure that people realize that those things are happening. And there is, uh, you know, an addictions counselor at the high school that is separate, and there's a lift pro- there are other programs at the high school that are separate. But the the resources, um, I think the word resource is a little bit of an understatement to what these officers provide for most of our students. I I appreciate Counselor Brooks's, um, you know, concerns and and understand that. And I all, I, so I'm excited to see what the new messaging will look like and the partnerships that, um, we can even continue. If we continue to T-Mech program, which is, um, something that Twolton Together is working, um, with some huge hideout groups and different things. So anyway, I just wanted to ensure everyone that's here that so many great things are happening, and, um, we we appreciate partnerships as as a nonprofit in the community.
All right. Well.
Can you make a motion?
All right.
We'll go.
A motion to adopt resolution number five-five-three-eight dash two-one.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number five-five-three-eight dash two-one. Any discussion of motions? Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Sacco.
Aye.
Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The resolution is adopted unanimously. Uh, item number two, consideration of resolution number five-five-four-zero dash two-one, setting a parks utility fee. Uh, there's Ross. Top it up. Good evening, Ross.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. I appreciate it. And, uh, I'm, we are joined by, uh, Rich Mueller. And, uh, Rich Mueller, uh, just take a second to recognize Rich Mueller, uh, through this conversation about park utility and and asset management of the of the assets in our parks. Rich Mueller, uh, did the heavy lifting. Ri- without, without Rich and his hard work, we wouldn't, uh, be having this conversation tonight. So thank you, Rich. Really appreciate that. Um, so you you, uh, might recall December, uh, council adopted ordinance, uh, one-four-four-seven dash two-zero that was authorizing the parks utility, uh, in creating it through municipal code three-dash-seven. And then, uh, at our most recent meeting, April twelfth, uh, work session, uh, council discussed the fee and directed staff to bring back a resolution, setting the parks utility fee at five dollars per month, beginning Jan- July first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, so we have, uh, returned with that resolution for your consideration, discussion and consideration.
Thank you. So with that, discussion and consideration by City Council.
If there's no discussion, oh.
Counsel Hillier.
Uh, yes, um, I just, um, I didn't weigh in before because I really had to think even more about this. And I really, um, am passionate about our parks, but I really think that as a community, as a council, as stewards of the resources in our community, I am concerned that we don't seem to have a solid, um, plan for maintenance. And so, um, I I just want to put that out there. I I understand where this discussion is going and and it's the right thing. But I am very concerned that we are in a position of nine-point-six million dollars in deferred costs of maintenance. And and I really think that, um, my conscience really says to me, we need to make sure that we have some standards in place to move that forward other. A- and I know that we're going to work on braided funding and all those sorts of things, but I am really concerned that, um, there isn't a plan. And I would be willing to help be part of a solution to that, but I just really could not, um, let this opportunity go by without saying that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to adopt resolution five-five-four-zero.
Your, your hand like wipes into your doorway.
Yeah, you're.
Into what?
Your hand's hard to see because it's going on your, your closet's much better. Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Reyes.
Um, I'm actually, I love our parks, and I sit on a committee where I hear what the community has to say, um, about the parks. And I, I'm actually not no, 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 I can't, I can't really move and and forward with a five-dollar fee. That, I really just to think of a lot of families that I come across and talk to all the time, and a five-dollar fee seems seems a lot to me. I I think I want to reconsider that. I'm just, um, in fact, I I want to be on, I I'm not, I feel like, I mean, feel the price, I want to do this, but, um, I think five dollars for me is, we just went for the top, and I feel like there's, there's no consideration of, uh, maybe trying like four dollar or three dollar maybe for the next two years. Kind of go up a little best day at five, see what things look like with COVID. I mean, we're closing restaurants or we're thinking of closing in the next couple of weeks. And, um, I just don't feel comfortable, um, with the five-dollar fee. Um, I do really want to work hard, and I'm willing to put on my tennis shoes and my athletic clothes and go out there and knock on every single door for months if I have to, and get everyone to jump on board with something that's going to really make a difference. With like a bond or something that's going to be, that's going to change and and be, um, transformational. Um, so I wanted to say that I, I can't, I don't know, I just felt like it was, it was easy to say five dollars. And I don't know, I can't, I I just can't fathom that in our families that are out there. And I just want to say that I'm not, I I would, I really want to consider, I was thinking, um, something, I don't know, between three three or four or something like that, but I can't.
Counsel Pratt.
I guess, no, I'm going to come in from, um, well, I agree with, um, Counselor Hillier. Um, I mean, this is a drop in the bucket of what we need, but we, um, we're, we have so much deferred maintenance and and, yes, may, I mean, hopefully, we're going to get a bond or levy in the future, but right now, we need to do something. We have, we have things closed because we don't, there's been deferred maintenance for decades. And and if we don't do this, we're just going to have more and more deferred maintenance and less parks. And I, I mean, we've all seen during this COVID time that people have just, um, our parks have been packed. If you go out there on a nice day and they've been packed, and even our river was packed this year. And so, um, and really, if we're, if we're going to sit here and quibble about three or five dollars, we're talking about twenty-four dollars a year. And people that live in apartments aren't paying this. Other people, they're, um, you know, Counsel Brooks could speak to this, but there are, um, there's help out there for them. So, um, I I just really feel we need to, um, do this with the full five dollars.
And I want to see it like in writing or something that there's a, there's a plan, uh, if this, something, if if if, um, we go into a bond or levy. I mean, we had a survey and and people were just, I don't know, this is pre-COVID, and people were against this. So I can't even imagine how things are going to be now with COVID. So I, I want to see something that's going to show me a plan. I I see, you can just say five dollars and then okay, be, so be it. I I want to see a plan that says, okay, for this amount, this is going, this is going to happen for this year. Then next year, we're going to do this, and then the following year is going to happen. This is what's going to happen. And that's what I, I have not seen that yet. I just, I just see a fee. That's all I'm seeing right now.
Counsel Sacco.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I, I understand everybody's concerns and I appreciate everybody's comments. Um, and I look at all this deferred maintenance too, and, um, you know, how did it get, how did it get this bad? But I al- would also like to remind people that we've been working on the master plan and been working on this funding for years now. And I can personally say that I have worked on this for years, being part of T-Park. So the the longer we wait, the more deferred maintenance we're going to have. And, um, and I do think that, you know, I I do understand that, you know, the difference between four and five dollars a year is is twelve dollars. And I think that that's a small price to pay for the value our parks brings, bring to the community. I mean, it's, that's less than going to a movie one time where you can use the parks again and again and again and again. Uh, so I think it's, it's money well spent. And to Valerie's point, um, you know, there is, you know, people in apartments aren't necessarily paying that directly. There's programs. Uh, and this is part of the solution too, but it's a part of the solution that we can have an impact for right now. Um, and we can start making a dent right now. And I'd also like to remind folks that we can get grants and matching dollars. So with these funds, it's not just these funds. We can think of that as possibly times two um, with with matching grants if if we are able to get those. So it can be a bigger impact. Um, but again, uh, it it's something that is is an urgent need, as Cindy, Counsel Hillier, pointed out, nine million dollars. Um, and so I really think we need to start chipping away at this as as soon as possible. Um, so I'm hoping that we could pass it at the, at the five dollars. Again, the difference between four and five is twelve dollars for a year. Um, so yeah, thank you.
Again, that was all pre-COVID. Let me finish my point. I will not speak after this. That was, it was pre-COVID, everything we planned. We all have made adjustments after COVID. We all have changed things around. There's a lot coming. I mean, we're still, there's people are closing businesses pretty soon in the next couple of weeks. Um, and we all had to adjust our lifestyle in every single way. And, um, even, even theaters are going to be closed, so it's not just thinking of like going to the movies or anything. Um, I just think that it's I just think that it's, I don't think it's, I want to see it in writing, how this is going to play out, how things are going to look like. Otherwise, it's just, I want to see it in writing. I want to see how things are going to be planned out. And then by maybe next year or two years from now, we're going to do a bond and something like that. But I have not seen that. So, I've only heard fees. That's all I'm hearing.
Counselor Counselor Hillier, then Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my only other statement is, I, I hear this and I am in favor of the five dollars. But I, with that, believe that this will be a very unpopular statement. But I do think we need to consider a moratorium on new building that comes out of this particular pot of money, other than the SDCs. I think we need to decide to commit, and that's just my opinion, to commit to putting our capital right now, that is not restricted funds, into getting these parks back to safe and healthy. And it's part of the, you know, why people move here to Tuolatin. These parks are critical to us and I, and I understand that. I just am, that's, that's all.
So, Counselor Brooks, then Counselor Pratt, then Counselor Sacco.
Well, I, I'm not going to speak long. I want to just say, from my understanding, when we move on to the bond conversation, that's when capital focus would be. And I appreciate Counselor Reyes's concerns about having a plan. And I think that I'm really encouraged that, about Sherilyn's suggestion around utilizing the same group that did our moving forward bond work. So, that to me feels like we will have a plan. And that is a capital projects conversation. And I'm looking forward to making progress on that as well. In the meantime, I want to remind people that the parks disproportionately serve people that don't have yards, kids a place for them to go play. It's been an amazing resource for everybody during COVID. And finally, it affects every single person's property values that owns homes. So, to me, I'm kind of with Counselor Sacco. I've been talking about this since I came onto council. I'm kind of surprised we're having a long debate after we gave really specific direction. And I mean, I'm ready to make a motion. So, I'd like to move that we.
Bridget, you've got two more questions before. Counselor Pratt and Sacco have to go.
I'm ready. Everybody else is ready.
Counselor Brooks covered most of what I was going to say. The only thing, I'm kind of, I just want to say that I felt like last time and many times before, we've seen how these fees will be used to help repair our parks. So, I think that's already been covered.
Counselor Sacco?
Sorry, real quick, I just wanted to, I meant to say this earlier. But when we did the, when we did the community survey, it wasn't that people didn't support it. It was over 50% of people that supported some sort of fee bond levy. But it wasn't, it wasn't over the top support. But it was over, I can't remember the percentage now, but it was over 50% that did support funding our parks. It just wasn't way over the top. So, I feel that it is the majority of our community that supports funding our parks from that community survey that was done. Thank you.
Now, back to Counselor Brooks.
Okay, I move to, to, for consideration of resolution five, five, four, zero, two, one, to approve setting up park's utility fee.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution five, five, four, zero, dash, two, one, setting a park's utility fee. Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counselor Reyes?
No.
Counselor President Grimes?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also. So, it's a six to one in favor of resolution five, five, four, zero, dash, two, one. The resolution is adopted. All right, moving to items removed from, about that. Items removed for consent. We did have one item removed from consent. And that is item number three, consideration for approval of a change in liquor license application for Buffalo Wild Wings. And that was pulled by Counselor Hillier.
So, all, I appreciate that it is late. And I just wanted to point out, and I also will put Sean at rest to understand that. I appreciate that this body has absolutely no authority other, if this goes through or not. But I really want to point out, as I look at OAR eight, four, five, zero, zero, six, zero, three, nine, nine. And it's a rule that has been instated by the Governor on March 8th of 2020 and an extension until she decides to change that extension, which is a temporary rule to allow off-site drinks. Now, I'm forgetting the right words. But anyway, I just really feel like it's important for this body to understand that, to know that if you take a look at that, and I hope that we do in the future, if you take a look at that, whatever this is, ordinance, temporary rule, sorry, I should know, that a full onsite premises sales license carries with it violations. I'd like to have some understanding. And again, I appreciate somewhat that this is rhetorical. But I do think it's important for this body to understand that it's a change in accessibility of alcohol in our community. And that there is a training issue, there is a, not issue, there is a training component and a compliance component that is not addressed in the state standards. And there is a lot of discussion that this will likely be moved into a permanent off-site premises ruling. And there are really no, there's no ability to track who is getting it, that there are formal IDs and things like that. So, I just really wanted to make this body aware that this is something that groups across the state and that are looking at. And I feel like it's important that we consider what we want our community to look like. And it could be instead of a $75 fee, for instance, that we jack the fee up to change this particular, because it's an amendment to their liquor, their current liquor license. Because you have to have an onsite license in order to do this. And so, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to this body's attention before we vote on it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the change in liquor license application for Buffalo Wild Wings?
Still moved?
Sorry, I.
Counselor Reyes?
I think I'm understanding the, the, what Counselor Cindy, I learned, Hillier, sorry, read. I think I need a little bit more explanation of what, what's going on with, with, it's Buffalo Wild Wings. So, I mean, are you saying that they, they're not allowed to serve liquor or outside of their premises? Or they are not to serve, but under these conditions that we are right now with COVID? I guess I'm not understanding.
Do you want to weigh in, Sean, or?
In easier terms, please. Thank you.
Do you want to weigh in, Sean, or Chief Steele? I think it's my Sean question.
Yeah, either way. So, the Governor and through administrative rule is allowed for drinks to go. And so, certain establishments who have the proper liquor license can now sell drinks to go. So, you still have to be of age. You still have to, it's not allowed to be served to minors. But it allows somebody who is over the, 21 or over to go in and purchase liquor to go.
Well, and to, and to add to that, it also allows for third party like Grubhub or those sorts of organizations to have a person who is 18 years of age or older be the person that is responsible for checking the ID when they get there, for ensuring that they're not intoxicated before they hand it over. There are a lot of stipulations in this that, again, we as a body cannot change. This is what it is. But I just thought that we should understand that that is happening. And Buffalo Wild Wings is not the first restaurant in our community to do this. It's just the first since I've been on council and had the opportunity to weigh in.
Oh, understood. Okay, so, okay. I, I'm sorry. I understand now. So, you're just bringing it up to our attention. Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I, I move to, sorry, I'm lost on the thing. I move to approve the item three from the, from the. Consent agenda for the change in the liquor rule for Buffalo Wild Wings. I'll second that.
So, I have a motion and a second for approving the change in liquor license application for Buffalo Wild Wings. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Hillier?
Attention.
Counselor Pratt?
Aye.
Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counselor Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So, we have six ayes and one abstention. All right. So, the liquor licenses change is approved. Moving down, any communications from council? Counselor Pratt?
I believe we have a Development Commission meeting right after this. And I just wonder, might I be of that?
Yep. All right. So, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment of the City Council meeting?
Still moved.
All those, all those in favor of adjourning the City Council meeting for this evening, put your hands up. Say aye. Aye. All right. This meeting is now concluded. Now, we switch gears. And I'll open up the call out order, the April 26th, 2021, Tuolatin Development Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for those who like to speak to something that is not on the commission's agenda tonight. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone base at the poll center in the meeting? Has Slim Pickens in the meeting want to give public comment to the commission?
There is no one here at the poll center.
So, our next item up is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is passed with one vote. These are things that are considered routine and we vote on these items as a group. Unless someone would like the item remove consent. Does anyone like, want items one or two removed from the consent agenda tonight? Nope. All right. So, our items tonight consist of item number one, consideration for approval of the Tuolatin Development Commission meeting minutes on March 22nd, 2021. And item number two is consideration of resolution number six, two, six, dash, two, one, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt? Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye also. Item number three, item number one in general business is consideration of resolution number five, six, two, five, dash, twenty-one, that's six, two, five, dash, twenty-one, authorizing the administrator to execute a sole source contract with the Lainpower Consulting LLC. And I see Jonathan's back.
Yeah. So, real quick, Commission, this is just a simple contract to do the Leventon substantial amendment at a later date. The reason why we are doing this is we're going to be crafting an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tuolatin. So, we won't have to be back in this kind of capacity again. So, first, Sean, we're cleaning up our, our ordinances and our contracts. But for tonight, this is just a simple sole source contract to do the substantial amendment for Leventon.
Any questions for Jonathan?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number six, two, five, dash, two, one. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution six, two, five, dash, two, one. Any discussion on those motions? All right. Commissioner Hillier?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Grimes?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also. The resolution is adopted. And that's it. Do I have a motion for adjournment for tonight?
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second to close the commission meeting for this evening. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a safe night. And for anybody who's still listening, again, continue to wear your mask and stay socially distant and wash your hands.